of the Academic Affairs Committee. First item is a call to order, roll call. Ms. Knowles?
Committee Chair Annabelle DeBois.
Here.
Trustee John Brudnik, trustee James Kaderas.
Oh, here.
Thank you.
Okay, there's no trustees present, there's quorum. I'd like to acknowledge Sir Corey Bradford, I understand there will be others joining us, but thank you for being early here with us and President Green.
Good morning.
Good morning.
The first transaction most of our meetings, of course, is public comments. I don't know if there have been any requests for public comments made. So being no requests for a public comment, we go on with the agenda's first item then being the approval of the meeting agenda. May I have the motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second, I guess, I'm sorry, I should not wait for you to.
That would be you.
Would you like me to call them?
Yes.
Trustee Kaderas.
Aye.
Trustee DeBois.
Aye, with the minutes, the approval of the meeting agenda, the first transaction is the approval of the minutes of our prior meeting of March 30, 2022 of this committee.
I move that we approve the meetings as presented, the minutes as presented.
Second, Ms. Knowles?
Trustee Kaderas.
Aye.
Trustee DeBois.
Aye, with the minutes being approved as presented, we go into today's informational items. First is a report from the School of Extended Learning, and Dr. Schneller will please introduce his report.
Yes, good morning, thank you all, sorry I couldn't be there, as you know, I tested positive this morning for COVID-19 through a home test, so I'm, you know, out of abundance of caution staying away from you all today.
Thanks for not being here.
Before we go into the School of Extended Learning report, I did want to just bring a few items to your attention, some accomplishments since our first meeting together in March. In the middle of April, we received notification that our Doctor of Nursing Practice, our DNP program, has been fully accredited by ACEN, so that's a major accomplishment, although the program has been around for a number of years, the accreditation was recently sought and it has been achieved, so that's another accredited program for us. Also, our Occupational Therapy Program just went through a successful annual renewal. Since our March meeting, we also have accumulated an additional $1.7 million in grants, we have three that have come through the School of Extended Learning and one through the School of Education, which you already heard about, the Early Childhood Education Consortium, and Amy Barsha will tell you more about the School of Extended Learning's grants during her presentation. I also wanted to make you aware that on Monday, the deans of the College of Business and of Health and Human Sciences went with me to Riverside Hospital in Kankakee, where we're working on some partnerships for our graduate and undergraduate students to work in that hospital system, and also to work with the hospital itself in talent management and human resource development, because they are committed to encouraging their employees to either complete degrees or start degrees, and we have many fields and many overlaps, and we already have about 60 people who are Governor State University graduates or are currently enrolled who are working in the Riverside Hospital system at this time. On June the 1st, we'll be joined by Dr. Robert Stanley, who is our new Director of Institutional Effectiveness, and you know that in the last two weeks, we have had multiple celebrations of our graduating classes, and we've also had some very significant accomplishments with a student in social work, who was a 4.0 graduate, Sedona Smith, receiving the Lincoln Student Award, which is the highest honor for a civilian in the state of Illinois. We also had a very successful National Signing Day event organized by Vice President McGinnis and his team for the incoming first-year students, and we've signed our first dual credit agreement through the efforts of Dr. McGinnis, Dr. Sexton, others with high school. So I wanted to be sure that you were aware of some of those things as we move into the showcase presentation for today. So at this time, I'll ask Amy Barsha, who I can't see, but I assume is there, to come to the podium and provide her requested presentation on the School of Extended Learning, and then she'll be able to pause and answer some questions after her presentation. Amy?
Thank you, Dr. Schneller.
Thank you.
For those who don't know me, I'm Amy Barsha, Executive Director of the School of Extended Learning, and I am really excited to be here today to talk about all the wonderful things that the School of Extended Learning has been doing. I know many of you received the slides already, so I'm not going to go through every single slide, but I will touch on some of them and then leave time for questions. So the School of Extended Learning does a lot of different things. Professional development is one of the key things, we provide certification training, career training, and I'm going to talk a little bit later about the badging of some of our micro credentials. We also have the English Language Learning Center, where we focus on a couple different audiences, not just international students that pipeline into GSU that need English proficiency, but we also help community members get the English language skills for the workforce or just for themselves. We also provide ESL for parents at school districts, we've been doing more and more of that as well, too. Over the last few years, we built up a full-fledged testing center at GSU, we use revenue from the School of Extended Learning to build out the testing center in GMT building, as well as revenue for a new Veteran Resource Center, which is in the GMT building, and the test center has grown enormously, I'll talk a little bit more about that. We also provide customized business and industry training to businesses in the area, we go onsite, they can ask us for whatever they need to upskill their employees, and we provide that training for them. We also, you may have seen sometimes on Friday, a nice older group that's on campus, they're the lifelong learning group for the knowledge exchange, they're 55-plus, and they're semi-retired, retired folks that come on campus for lifelong learning, and the great thing about this group is they're really engaged with GSU, they give back donations, they go to the CPA, they go to the fitness center, they give to the sculpture park, so they're a really engaged group with GSU, many are alone. The last thing we do is credit-bearing courses at off-site locations. Currently, it changes where we offer it, but currently we're active in Joliet Junior College, Kankakee Community College, and Triton College, it gives the students a seamless way to move from associate's degrees to bachelor's degrees and stay right onsite at that community college. So over the last few years, we've seen a lot of revenue growth and also increased our amount of students we're serving, and it's due to the pandemic, that's pretty obvious for us, we're really nimble, you know, we don't, we can change our courses real quickly, we moved to modalities, not just online, but virtual synchronous, we changed a lot of our courses to online self-paced, and we saw a real uptick, obviously, when people couldn't go out during the pandemic, so we took advantage of that in School of Extended Learning. We also received four grants, and this is what Dr. Schneller was talking about, our Community Foundation of Will County gave us two grants, one was the Manufacturing Automation Upskilling Grant, we're serving high school students that are not on the path to college, get CNC training to move into the workforce, and we're upskilling people already in manufacturing plants to get Lean Six Sigma and management skills to move up, to become maybe a manager or supervisor. The other grant, we're working with the College of Ed on, is the Paraprofessional to Early Childhood Ed Grant, where we are helping people in the community get training to become a paraprofessional in the school district, and then, once they're there, we're going to give them additional training where they can articulate some of those credits to the Early Childhood Ed degree to move into early childhood, so it's a great way to increase enrollment in that area and move them forward to a bachelor's degree. The other grant we recently received, literally like three or four weeks ago, is through the Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity, it's a grant that was focused on helping disproportionately impacted areas from COVID to increase access and equity for the community members to get training in two healthcare fields, clinical medical assistant and medical billing and coding, we're doing some wraparound services, paid externships, and getting them into the workforce. The other grant that we've been working on, that we're actually about a year and a half in finishing up another half a year, is the Competitive Gear Grant, which we partnered with the College of Arts and Science, our piece of that was English language instruction, it was also geared for disproportionately impacted areas of COVID, so what we did is we gave Wi-Fi subsidies and computers to the language learners, and they did virtual synchronous training online, the goal was to get them into a college path or to career training, we've already served two cohorts, we're on the third cohort now, and some of the students actually transitioned not just into other colleges, but to GSU as well. The testing center, which I mentioned is growing, we have three different platforms, these are the three major platforms that would basically deliver all the tests you can think of, all the certification tests for community members, so we're really have grown from a small test center, just serving a few students, to community service. Last year, we served 772 faculty-requested student exams, that includes CLAP, DSST, and Alex, and we made over 50,000 with community testing, where people come to our campus, and they, we get money for people sitting in the seats for how many hours, and that's how we get revenue for the community. We really increased over the last few years what's called the Workforce Innovation Opportunity Act funding, this is for community members that are unemployed or underemployed or dislocated workers that can get vouchers to train non-credit certifications that are in-demand for free. So we're working with a lot of the worknet centers throughout Illinois, and they send us students that take our certifications and they pay for them through a voucher. So we, every year, we approve more and more of these in-demand trainings, right now, we have 52 through GSU that are approved, and many people didn't know, but we actually have 19 degree programs approved as well, they do have to exhaust their financial aid first for the degree programs, but we've had students say, I exhausted my financial aid, but I used WEOWA to finish up for the last year or so, and they finished their degrees with that. We served over 100 people in about the last two years through WEOWA. One of our exciting things that happened that many have heard of is that we became an Amazon Career Choice Training Provider, it started out with two non-credit certifications for clinical medical assistant and, excuse me, medical billing and coding, but now it's really ballooned out, we just, they came to us, they said, can we open our catalog up for bachelor's degrees, we just did that, anyone that works at Amazon in Illinois can take their educational benefits from Amazon and go to a bachelor's degree at GSU. They also asked us to provide ESL onsite at Moni and Joliet plants, and they also may expand to University Park and Markham, so we're starting that this summer, based on how much interest there is, we're going to be providing ESL onsite as well. And lastly, we're working with College of Arts and Science to provide cohort training for general education courses at the end of the summer, starting for degree programs onsite at Amazon, so it's really ballooning out. This is just a few of our customized business and industry contracts this year, I do want to mention Thornton Fractional School District, we've had a four-year stint with them already, every year we work with them for helping their students get SAT test prep and some other, college writing, you know, financial literacy, and we always push an open house with them as well, so that they can go to enrollment at GSU. We were really excited this year because military-connected funding has typically only been for credit-bearing courses, but we worked very hard, it took us a while, and we got 10 non-credit healthcare certifications now eligible for veteran GI Bill funding, so we think we're starting to get interest that some of the students want to do these non-credit certifications as well as credit-bearing courses. The last thing I want to talk about in depth is our Strategic Enrollment Plan, which is School of Extended Learning as a gateway to enrollment. So what we were finding is that as we were doing badges, which I'll talk about next, some of our coursework, micro credentials and credentials could get a badge, and what these badges are is a digital emblem or symbol that you can share on LinkedIn, on any social media account, on your resume, it shows a specific skill set that you've earned, we validate it through GSU, and it shows achievement with a lot of detail, when you hit that badge, it shows all the metadata behind it, everything that you've learned, and 90%, 97% of recruiters say that digital credentials are really now important for hiring, when employers see that, they hit the badge and they see those credentials. So I wanted to show you a little bit about our badge taxonomy and what the badges look like, so there's different color coding to them, different look of them, so the first one is more of a skill badge, a learning exponential skill badge, which is yellow, we have a lot of test preparation courses that you can see there, and our next badge, it looks, it says test preparation. The third badge shows that you've passed a credential, a certification, a national test, and you've gained that credential or continuing ed units. But the last badge is what I really wanted to focus on here today is, it's the same as credit credential or articulation to credit badges that we're working on, this started about a year ago, we got a small committee together, and we started with policy first, how are we going to work this into our policy so that we know that when we see these badges, the registrar knows, this particular skill will articulate to credit, so we worked on policy first, and now we're at the stage where we're working with faculty, chairs, and deans to look over some of our credentials and say, do the learning outcomes align with some credit-bearing course? Does it, does, does, does the outcomes meet those standards for that credit-bearing course? Some of ours do, some of them won't, and we're finding a lot of them do, so let me give you a good example, the Lean Manufacturing Six Sigma Techniques course in College of Business, we have a faculty member that teaches the non-credit version of Lean Six Sigma Green Belt, so when people take that, they know that that aligns directly with a course in the College of Business, and it will now, when they see that badge, it will now articulate to three college credits.
Question there, would you repeat that statement, what do you mean by that? Articulate to college credit, is that automatic, that it's, it's, meaning you?
When you take a non-,
Okay, yeah. You have to register in order to be able to get that credit?
When, so when you, yes, so what happens is, you have to decide to go to GSU and follow the normal admittance process and go through all that, but when you're admitted, just like you have transfer credits, and they look over, if they see that you've taken Lean Six Sigma Green Belt in the School of Extended Learning, you passed, that, there's like an MOU between the College of Business and our school that says, that will equate to a three-credit course in the College of Business.
But only at GSU, in other words, they?
Yes, I can't, yes, I can't say that, yes, you're correct, I can't say other schools will accept that for three college credits.
Yeah, but I mean, but it's, if, they have not been awarded a college credit anywhere, and it would only be awarded at GSU if they register at GSU, meaning that it's not portable, as portable as it could be if it were a credit in, if you granted credit in the transcript?
I know exactly, yes, I do have to say, it is, I can't talk for other schools, it is not portable, I can't, you know, another college may say, that's not for here, we're not accepting that, but only at GSU, correct, but we're trying to crease, see, they're taking these courses, and they're not necessarily on the college path, but then when I talk to these people, I say, have you thought of going to college, you can get college credit for that, these couple non-credit certifications, maybe for doing a portfolio, so this is a way to get them enroll to GSU and get some credits.
I understand that part, and that's kind of superb value, particularly if you go here, but it is obviously not as valuable, as portable, as having in a transcript, so it is tied to GSU, in essence, it's, not diminishing its value, but it's, it's kind of like, okay, if you come here, you get college credit, if you go elsewhere, we will not give you a transcript that says you have a college credit.
Well,
May or may not be accepted elsewhere.
That's not accurate, if we're, they're doing a badge, and then if they do some extra work, or if they equal, if they pass a test, or whatever the prior learning assessment is, they do get transcripted credit here, which would transfer to
That's,
other school.
Okay, so there is a mechanism, credit by examination, or whichever, you have to go beyond this to get, that you can actually?
It will be transcribed with the registrar for GSU credit, it will look like they took that particular course.
Okay.
So if they now move from, you know, here's my transcript, and they go to Prairie State, that will, because that's what Shannon's saying, it will be transcribed from GSU.
Okay, then that, that has value.
That's what it will be.
Of course, both have value, but that has, is more, I don't know, commercial applicability or?
No, I agree, I think the question that I thought you were asking is, let's say they did not go to GSU, and Shannon, you might be, I might be wrong here, but that means that if they don't get it transcribed through GSU, can they go to Prairie State and say, I took this non-credit, will it translate? That won't happen, but if they get it transcribed here, right, like Shannon said, they can, now it's portable for other universities. Does that make sense?
When you say get it transcribed here, that doesn't mean that they have to attend, they have to enroll here or follow on semester, or something like that, this can be, this could be their only transaction with GSU, for example?
I'll explain a little bit more if Amy's okay. So every university in Illinois has what's called prior learning assessment.
Right.
So what, if they go through the prior learning assessment, which these badges would count for, at GSU, it gets transcribed, it would automatically transfer to other schools. I think what Amy is saying, if they don't go through the transcription process here, it may or may not fit the prior learning assessment content at another university, so that's.
That's, that's good, yeah.
But one can do a prior learning assessment and transcription without becoming a full-time student or a student here?
Correct.
Yes.
Perfect.
Yes, that, that, that's exactly right, that leads me to my next slide, that's, so I was going to end with prior learning assessment.
Okay.
That's it.
Great, okay, thank you.
Thank you, Shannon, could you explain it, no, she explained it very well, and I'm glad you did that.
It, in my view, increases the value significantly, yes, thank you.
So, thank you, Shannon, so I do want to, I have two more slides, and this is, this is the end, so badging, what we wanted to find out is, we want to make sure we're not just badging things that don't have quality, so we're having the faculty look over these badges and say, yes, there's quality to this credential, the person passed with 80% or more, and this meets our standards of regular, the coursework that, so we're making sure the rigor and quality is there, and not just badging things that don't make sense, so there's value, like you said. And then, at the end, I want to talk about the audiences that we're tapping into to articulate to credit are all the audiences I just talked about, the veterans that take the GI Bill funding, Amazon Career Choice Associates can be, get these articulation badges, as well as past students in the School of Extended Learning that took different coursework, and some of our grant participants will be able to get badges that may articulate to credit. So what I was going to end with, and this is what led us to it, is School of Extended Learning is now offering workshops, starting in the summer, not for credit workshops, to the community, talking about credit for prior learning and prior learning assessment that Shannon was talking about, so they don't have to sit in the traditional classroom, they can do this non-credit badging, they can do a portfolio, they can show other ways that they come to the university to get credit without having to enroll, like you said, so that, that worked right into that, and I think that's the last slide, so if there's any other questions, or Shannon or I will be able to answer them.
Question, go ahead. Okay, thank you very much, I got, I just, all my questions right now aren't going towards a point, it's just my lack of knowledge about the program, I heard about he has this program, and it kind of sounded like great things, and just never had much detail, so keep that in mind as I ask these questions. So the first question is, where are you at, do you have a capacity, are you 50%, are you 100%, are you, are you fully occupied, are you just ramping up in certain areas, how are you with the abilities to provide the services that are asked of you?
Right now, we're a little low on staff, but we're hiring, because Amazon is actually, was more robust than we thought, it was our first year doing it, we always want to ramp up, because we want to be revenue generating to support the unit, but we do need some more staff resources, which we are in the process of hiring, but yes, we, we have enough staff to do, you know, most of it now, and when we get fully staffed, we will be able to do all the things I just showed you.
Okay, you made a blatant statement that when employers come to us for accreditation or jobs, trains, or refresher skills, or whatever, you provide those, that can't happen overnight, yeah, but is your staff conversant in all these various areas, or is there?
No, okay, so that's a good question, no, we don't provide it, we coordinate and facilitate, we use our faculty that are currently at GSU, we give them extra pay, we have an adjunct pool, and we have other people outside that come in and do the training, we do not do the training, we just coordinate, facilitate, we could never do that, we're not subject matter experts.
I wouldn't think so, that's, that's why I had the question, because I wasn't sure what you're.
So that, so we're always ramped up for that, we have a whole pool of people that teach for us.
Okay, so that's reassuring, because I wasn't sure how we'd be able to function otherwise in any way, so, so Amazon dropped in us out of the blue, what happens if Walmart comes through, or any other big, major industrial group comes through wanting similar services, do you, is this your best case scenario, is this your worst nightmare, or how do you, how do you view?
We want that, we want Amazon, we want us boast and say to Walmart that we just are a Career Choice Training Provider for Amazon, and we can do the same thing for you with your educational benefits for your, you know, and, and maybe start out small, but grow, just like we did with Amazon, we started with non-credit, moved into credit-bearing, we'd love to get in with Walmart, or all the big ones.
How long has, have you been in existence?
Oh, well, I've been here nine years, School of Extended Learning dates back to, I don't know, someone in my office said it dates back 30, 40, you know, years, almost to the inception of Governor State, I'm sure it's date back farther.
You threw some numbers at us, that's just taken in the vacuum right now, got nothing to compare it against, how are we doing, are we ramping up, are we staying, holding our own, are we not?
I can tell you, over the last nine years, it's grown enormously, when I came, there was not a lot happening in School of Extended Learning, so we have ramped up over the last nine years, I'd say the last three to four.
My next question, is there something you can attribute to post-pandemic, or people?
Pandemic, because people couldn't go in person, so we ramped up all our training, virtual, online, self-paced, we saw a real increase.
Okay.
Yeah.
You made a statement about the Amazon services, that anyone, any Amazon employee in Illinois can, can come to us for, for participation in extended learning, if it's all virtual, could be, it could not, could it not be nationwide?
Wait, I want to correct that, anyone can use their educational benefit for bachelor degree programs in the state of Illinois, it's not through School of Extended Learning, that is just through the normal admissions process that Paul McGinnis is handling, you know, with his group, and they can take any online class, as long as it's credit-bearing, or a whole online degree, and they can use their educational benefit, which they have a certain allotment per year, 5250 is the amount they get per year to take courses, so if they're working, they could, we figured out that they could take two courses each semester, part-time, and still work, and get that fully paid for.
Okay, give me some background on this badging concept, is it new, is it, is it commonly accepted, or is it something unique to this, or what?
It's new to us, but it is not brand new, we are on the cutting edge of it, but a lot of institutions are seeing the value of it now, and finding that they have to refocus, because a lot of people, especially for the great resignation, want upskill training, they decided, hey, I want a new career even, people even with degrees come to me and say, I want this certification, because I want to go a different route in my career, so we found that, people found that this is a great way to validate these non-credit certifications, kind of standardize them, and this has been in existence for, I think nobody used them for a while, but they've been in existence for a while.
How do these differ from anybody in any industry going through some training, and they get their little badge of accomplishment, a little certificate of accomplishment at the end of the session, is that, is that this generation's version of that, those sort of?
Yes, it's kind of more the digital version of, no one wants a piece of paper completion certificate nowadays, it's more like you can share this, you can put it on a resume, and I didn't show you the platform, we didn't have the time, but when you actually hit the link of the badge, it gives you tons of information on like what specific skill you've gained, what employers in the area are looking for those skills, I mean, this badge is connected to a platform, like I said, I didn't bring it today, because I have, I'm supposed to, you know, a 10-minute thing, but it's very in-depth, so it's the digital way, much more than a completion certificate, it helps for hiring.
Amy, if I could jump in for a second on that question, one of the things that distinguishes a traditional sort of industry professional development training certificate and the kind that you get at any university is, it's taught by a faculty member who is mirroring often the curriculum of the college course as the basis for the badge, so the quality of the program is more aligned with what a student would be learning if they were registering for a course, and this is the same kind of model that the, that Google uses with their Grow with Google trainings, that there's specialization, that's gain. that there's specialization that's gained based on the content knowledge that the, the student receives. And the platform that Amy is referring to, we use Credly, C-R-E-D-L-Y. Credly is the, the best-known and the most functional of the digital badging platforms. And so you're able to access your credential, and it allows you to make a digital badge transcript that you can use. And so some employers will, you know, will request, or will have an opportunity through HR and professional development for people to do a number of badges for promotion within the company and, you know, that type of thing. So it's really very appealing, in addition to COVID, to people who now have become more independent consumers of customized education. It's also widely used to support internship programs and to add additional, as Amy was saying, additional opportunities on transcripts. There are some institutions that will incorporate badges in teamwork, or community engagement, or leadership, or nonprofit development, things like that, to specific courses. And so students have the opportunity to earn a credential that, that enhances their work readiness or career readiness, especially when they don't really have the opportunity to take on a job or a full-time job. One of the gaps that the badging programs have provided for students is the barrier often to getting a first, a first-time employment position in your field is prior experience. And so an aggressive digital badging program gives the students the equivalent of knowledge within the field that they can put on their transcripts, or refer to in their resumes, or cover letters as areas where they have, where they have focused training in that area, like a Six Sigma badge that a student might earn as an undergraduate, could, or a graduate student, would help them in getting a, a job once they're graduated from our program.
Okay, you just introduced one concept, but for more fogginess, this is just my perspective only. You made a comment maybe that, that the, that the programs are actually outsourced by, to, to a provider to actually share the content, the actual content. And yeah, I just heard that this is, you know, controlled by staffing, so it fits with the, with the curriculum that the college universities classes require. Which, how is it, what's the link there? Is it, is it structured? Does the college work with these providers to make sure their material is consistent with what?
There's both. What, what Dr. Schaller said is true, that there are some that, like, for instance, in College of Ed, Shannon can talk to this. We are creating badges with the faculty that they are creating that will articulate to credit for coursework, correct? So they're, they're, they're doing that. Then there's some badges that are, that already are our national standards, that there's credentials. Some are being looked over by faculty to see if they meet our standards, like, of rigor and quality, to articulate. Some will not. Some will not. It's very easy when, when faculty in Shannon's area is creating the badge to align with their coursework. We know, they're faculty right now, and that is happening, and that's an easy one. Some of them do our, for instance, we have COCTIA, those are the, the computer skills trainings. And we already know, they've been articulating to credit for a long time. If you pass that national exam for A+, Security+, Network+, it equates to three college credits. And Mary, maybe Mary can speak to that, if you know Mary, that, so we, that's been happening already. There's some national ones that we don't design and teach, but they already articulate in, I think it's Computer Science, three college credits, if you take this certification and pass. So those are no brainers, and there are some of those that we've already been doing. We didn't create those for faculty, but they equate.
Okay, again, like I said, I'm just trying to get straight in the back of my head how this, how this works and everything, so appreciate your explanation. Thank you much. Just one more comment or question about the military connection, veterans in military. How does that differ from just general classes, or general badges, and general things we offer? Are they, they're also presumably field-oriented, whether career these, these veterans and ex-military want to go into, we could provide additional training in that area? Is it, is it military training stuff? It's just, it's just general education stuff, correct?
No, I'm just saying that these, we have ten non-credit certifications that were approved for, for healthcare training, so if any military-connected students that's eligible for GI Bill, that eligible for the funding, typically, they were not, they would not accept non-credit certifications to use that funding. Now they will. We appear in a catalog for the military, it's called WEAMS. And these ten certificates, they could say, hey, I have a degree, but I really want to go and get my certification in, you know, pharmacy tech, or clinical medical assistant. They can just use that funding now for that non-credit certification. That's all that is. We expanded so they can use their funding.
I understand. Thank, thank you, thank you for that. How do you market this? As I said, if you've been in existence for as many years as you have, is it, is it, do you participate in catalogs, like you said, you already mentioned?
We have digital catalogs. We just put out a summer catalog. We have a fall and spring. We don't usually do summer, but we did do a summer catalog. We have a great marketing person that coordinates with our Markcom here, and we do a lot of digital campaigns. We don't do as much paper. We, you know, we, we market just as though any other college markets, with Markcom, and we have our own marketing as well. So we, we're out there marketing all the time. And we've, we've seen, we've seen the benefits of it.
Do, do you do outreach, like chambers of commerce?
Yes, yes. I'm part of the chamber, we're part of the workforce. We have somebody that sits on one of the youth boards. We market every avenue you can think of, and we have different people sitting on different boards and chambers.
Thank you for your patience.
My question is in the same line. Essentially, I'm trying to understand the business model. How do you get funding? How do you attract funding? It seems that it's primarily a couple of contracts that you have received, that it, that are kind of, your life depends on it in terms of, of the program. But I don't see if you're marketing this to kind of to the public, to students, to home, or is it the healthcare institutions for their employees? Or, I'm trying to understand the, the business model. Do you need to have a sponsor for a particular, like the Amazon ones? Do you go sell to other companies? Is it open to anybody?
We, we, we go to businesses and we sell our services all the time. We have a portfolio, we bring of what we can offer, some of the trainings, and we can customize anything. And we do business and industry contracts, yes, for whatever they ask for. And we, you know, we get many of them. Those were just a few samples. Over the years, we've, you know, dealt with Holland, we've dealt with Federal Signal around here, we've dealt with just a lot of them. Robinson Engineering, and sometimes we do tap into the WorkNet systems, which is the workforce, and we get like, I've gotten a grant that's Employer Training Incentive Program, where the employer gets reimbursed for fifty percent of the cost through a grant. I help them get some grants sometimes to pay for some of the training. But sometimes, you know, they, a lot of companies pay out of pocket for those business and industry contracts.
Let's say I work for some nonprofits that provide services to elderly, et cetera, and I want to get some certifications. And how do I even know about this? Do I have to reach to my employer to find if there is a contract that can be made? I'm trying to find, how does John Q. Public?
Well, I mean, we've, we've been marketing to every nonprofit, every, we have people that go to the nonprofits to market. That's one of our employer partnership corporate training person, who just recently retired, that we're replacing. That's her role, to reach out to nonprofits, reach out to businesses in the area, you know, we, you know, and market to them, just say, this is what we do, we're here for you. You know, and, and we, word of mouth, we have repeat customers. We, we market any other way that any other institution would, just like for credit bearing, you market. We do the same thing. We reach out to every churches, all groups.
Let me turn around. I lived on the street. How do I learn about this? How do I, how do I enroll? How do I get to participate?
I mean, we do have a digital marketing campaign. We, we do, we don't send, you know, paper brochures, but just like they, I'm.
I look, find in the catalog.
We have a catalog.
That I can, okay.
We're part, and we are part of the, the school, our School of Extended Learning is part of the regular catalog, the digital catalog for GSU. We're in the digital catalog.
Okay.
So if you open up the catalog, we'll, we'll have a section in School of Extended Learning.
And I can, I can sign up to participate, even though I'm not an employee of?
Yes, anyone can participate. We have an instant enrollment system. You go on our website, you enroll, you can pay with a credit card, a PO, you can, you know, all that. We, they don't, they can enroll instantly if you go on our website.
Perfect, perfect. Thank you.
Amy, isn't it true for our, where we are a provider, like for the PHR certification for human resources? People know of that certification, and they, they go to the PHR website, and they, by going to that website, see that we're a provider. So one way they find us is they know they want that certification, they go to that website, and they see, oh, I can get that at GSU. So that's one round.
Yeah.
But when we develop things specifically for an employer, that's going to be employer-specific, because their employer asks for it.
And this is, of course, available to even to high school, senior?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
The extended learning, it's available, you don't have to be.
Anybody can take our courses, anybody. There's no restrictions.
So I can, okay, so.
You could go on our website, enroll through our portal, instant enrollment for any class. We take all money from anybody.
Yeah, that means all we need to do is make sure that everybody knows about it, and that's.
Yeah, I mean, we, we, of course, would like more marketing about it, of course. We want more people to know about it. We want to expand our reach, absolutely. Shannon, what did you?
Oh, I was gonna, I was gonna say that one of the things that she didn't mention as much is the internal service that she does that generates money for their, for their program. Also, like, we do, the College of Education does workshops for our students and also for the external groups. And we'll charge for those, but it's a lot for us to manage, so we'll hire extended learning to run all of it, to do the marketing, to do the, the online management of it. And a lot of times, I'm paying for that through large grants, where we have different training programs and workshops we have to do through the grant. So the grant actually pays her. So yes, they go out and get grants directly, but also different constituencies within the university will pay them to do some of our grant work for us. So that's another way that they generate money.
This is why I asked Shannon to come today, so she could articulate for me. Thank you, Shannon. And we do, we partner with all the colleges to provide workshops, and all four colleges and Student Affairs to do workshops in collaboration, like she just talked about.
What if you had a motivated high school student, could they come and take classes?
Excuse me?
What if they had a, what if you came across a motivated high school student, are they eligible to enroll?
Oh, we, we do enroll them in different things, like we have SAT test prep, preparation, that's high school students getting, we have a class that we always do every year. We, sometimes we have some GED prep. You know, we, we, we deal with high school students, yes.
If they want to go into trades?
Yes. We're doing, that one grant is for CNC machining for high school students. Yep.
Thank you.
Yep.
Now, recall, we also supported our SEES program through extended learning. So our professional development that our employees can get, they get through, through the SEES program, through extended learning. So that's a way to take university resources, reinvest it in our own program, allow them to grow and to develop, so that they can branch out to other institutions as well.
Well, thank you very much.
Yeah, thanks for your patience. You got to say, we just, you know, this is, how do you know what you don't know, so we're just trying to get comfortable and familiar with that. Thank you for your information too, shared.
I hope I answered most of the questions.
I'm sure we got more, but we'll figure that out later.
Chair, probably Wes.
Yes? Oh, I'm sorry, I thought it was coming.
Will Davis just walked in, so he is prepared to answer any questions about our marketing campaigns for outreach for school for extended learning and contracts and whatnot.
How about it, Will? Thanks for walking in.
Sure, what question might I help you with?
The question was, I was asking about, how, how does the world know about, about the School of Extended Learning, what sort of marketing things we, and we heard that we participate in chambers of commerce, we reach out to businesses, reach out to high schools, reach out to other universities. What, can you give us a better sense to round out the whole marketing push, and how we get word out? Because this is new to us, the background, so this is all, we're just trying to get familiar with what, how this works.
Sure, absolutely. So we work with Amy's team. Sharon is not in the room, but Sharon Morrissey, who works very closely with Amy, helps handle their marketing communications and concert with our department. So, for example, our vendor we use for the institution, we set up an account for SXL, and so that they do social media, direct LinkedIn, they put a catalog together, direct mailing to businesses and corporations. So we do a lot of print. We don't do so, they do a catalog that gets masked as digital as well as physical. But it's a lot of direct, too. They also, I'm not sure if, but they also had a person who directly reached out to corporations and organizations for these things. And then pre-pandemic, we actually had a group on campus called GSU 360. So what that was, was anyone who was externally facing my team, Center for Performing Arts, School of Extended Learning, and some other individuals who were out there engaging our executive director of Government and Community Affairs, we all came together. And the premise of this was to make sure that the left hand knew what the right hand was doing. So let's take Walgreens. So Walgreens, we would love for them to sponsor the Center for Performing Arts. We would love for them to do scholarships. We also would like them for a practicum site, or co-curricular. And we would also, would like to maybe do some Six Sigma. So all those are a lot of ads for Walgreens, but we would come together so that everybody knew what was doing, and the individuals with the best relationships would carry all those things forward. So there's a lot of continuity, digital, print, voice, and piggybacking on what we do as well. So some of our communications have links to School of Extended Learning, and we kind of treat them like a college. And the last thing I would say is that, like the Agora. So when you read the Agora, each month, each college has a story, but so also does the School of Extended Learning, so that it's also sent out that way as well.
Okay, so I guess there's a question, just have a sense of how broadly it's disseminated?
Great.
And, and then lastly, because some of the things that we were doing through them for the workforce, we might do billboards. So, for example, with Amazon, you've, you've heard everything, there's great work we're doing with Amazon. So we put a billboard outside at Amazon. And, and then we could Geo zip some things as well. So, does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you much.
Thank you very much. Great. Well, thank you very much for the, the presentation. We do have a second topic, a second report regarding university library?
Yes, it's my pleasure to introduce interim dean Dennis Swanson, who is going to talk about his, his role in developing and working with our library. He's been here since February, and so this represents some of his early leadership efforts in managing the library.
Thank him. Glad to be here. I'm, as she said, I'm the interim dean. I'm in my thirtieth year of academic library work, and in different, three or four different places. So I wanted to talk a little bit about the library, where we're at, where we're going. I've entitled it Modernization, House Cleaning, and Preparation for the Future. And part of that is the one thing I did, the first week I was here, is I basically printed out the entire library holdings and examined them over a few days. And what I discovered was, is kind of what I thought, the, the collection was old. Now, originally, I understand the, the university purchased this library from another institution that was closing. And so a good chunk of the library came from another school, which is good or bad. It, it's, it's just the way things happen. But right now, well, when I did this report, eighty-six percent of the physical collection was published before nineteen ninety-nine, which means only fourteen percent of the collection dates in, from two thousand forward. And I would say of that fourteen percent, probably only three percent are within the last five years. So obviously, something had to do with that, you had a few years of, of budget problems in the state, and so we didn't add a lot to the collection then. I can tell you now, we, we've altered those numbers slightly. I would say now that the the modern part of the collection, the fourteen percent is probably up to twenty percent now. And, and that's, we've been adding things and subtracting things, which I'll explain. The layout of the library is not well-signed, or, and, and in many respects, not even logically arranged. It's, the, the library building, if you've been up there, you know, it's, it's something of a rabbit warren to walk around and do different things. And one of the things we're going to try to do. to walk around and do different things. And one of the things we're going to try to do with that is, I talked with the other deans yesterday at our meeting and we have some large niches in the building and we're, we're going to work on the idea of taking, for instance, the, the College of Education, the College of Business, College of Health and Human Services, give each one of those collections, one of those niches, where they can, we can move the, the collection that deals with those things into that area, set up some study areas for students, a place for one of my librarians who's their subject specialist or their liaison, we'll talk about that a little bit more, could be there and do reference work for the students that, that person, that that person's most familiar with in the subject matter. We will, and there's some things we can do that. Obviously, and that's, that's a, what I'll be talking about, preparation for the future. Because tip, a large, growing university like this eventually is going to need to split off those collections. Because, you know, you don't want one huge building with that, or you do want a larger building and you use different floors for different of the colleges. So that's something we're, we're looking at for the future. The, the, the staff offices are rather randomly placed and, and often little more than a cubicle. I have one, one of my faculty members, her front door of her cubicle office is a shower curtain. So, and those are sorts of things we want to overcome and, and get above and, and give them proper places to work. And working with John and facilities, we're, we have a plan for that and it's, you know, we'll be going forward as he's able to do that. But it is important, we'll basically take all of the, take an area and put, build an office center for the library. So that they have places to work, they have places to, to do their, their work properly and, and they're all together in the building instead of people in this corner and that corner and the corner over there. And it'd be closer, you know, down to where my office is so I can get to people faster and interact with them when we need to. The overall collection is, is large, but it's not, it's often not aligned with the academic departments. For instance, probably the, the best example of that, and I, my apologies to Therese for saying this, but we have 16 sections of shelving committed to law. We also have large runs in the periodical section, you know, Yale, Stanford, Columbia University Law Schools. And they're.
They're stopping here.
Somebody's in trouble. Should I wait for them? And, and, and so we don't have a law program here and, and the, the periodicals we have in print are, you know, Therese, they're fairly high end, they, they would be used in a law school and practically nowhere else. And, and obviously the school we purchased the collection from had some sort of law program. But those are things we, we need to reduce the size because it takes up space and serves no real purpose in the academic programs that we have here. So that's one of the things we need to do. We need, and we need to allocate more resources and, and area to the academic departments that we have, especially adding masters and doctoral programs. Those programs in and of themselves require a, a little bit more specialized material and, and we need to get out and, and purchase some of that. The actions we've taken, so as I said, we're aggressively weeding the collection and, and it's just a library term. What it is, is we're going through materials that are on the shelves that are either obsolete. For instance, we had, you know, a collection of GRE, which is, you know, graduate exam books, learn how to take it. We had, we had about 10 or 12 years of those. Well, only the current year is the one you need. It's, it's instead of, so instead of superseding, they just continue to be collected and, and they don't, they serve no purpose. In fact, the older they get, for instance, one of the things we were collecting was the test for FASB and the accounting people. You don't want students getting the old ones because they could get bad information because something had changed and they inadvertently, you know, they pulled it off the shelf, they didn't know it was the most, it wasn't the most modern one. And, and we could prepare students inadvertently to fail the test. And so we need to update that and, and continue to go forward. So unneeded, we've probably removed about 25,000 volumes to date. I expect that number to go closer to 50. And, and some of it was miscellaneous for, you know, we have, you always have quirky little things that you find, but I found a tri-fold piece of paper for some conference and for whatever reason, we put a barcode on it and we catalogued it as a title and was left on the shelves in between books where you could never find it. So it, you have quirky things like that, we're trying to overcome those things. There's ways to store that kind of material to make it available if it's needed by somebody, not sticking it on the shelves. The, some of the areas, and I have to just be completely upfront with you, some of the areas like computer science, nursing and business, and I have to update my number, we, in the computer science area, we probably withdrew 90% of the books, that they were of no value.
Obsolete.
Yeah, they're obsolete. I mean, different parts of your collection, different disciplines, you're going to age at a different rate. Literature, history, geography, the continents tend to stay where they belong and, and don't change all that much. But computer science, if, if it's more than five years old, it's probably of no value. Nursing is a little bit, and Health and Human Service is a little bit longer, maybe about five years. Businesses maybe about five to seven years. And, and those, so those things have to be, you know, gone through and removed and, and keeping everyone up to date. The reference collection was, we've cut that by half because they, most of the reference material is, is online, readily available online. So we do it that way. Now, we've been given $500,000 by Corey's office and we've split that in half at this point to start buying materials and, and, and making the collection more up to date and modern and taking care of those. We've been getting, getting a lot of input from the other deans, faculty members, getting people to come over and look at their discipline, getting the faculty to take a look at their, what they're requiring for courses. And I, I've asked them all for, you know, what are the three or five most important material books that you need for your courses? And we're, we're, you know, building a project like that. We are involved obviously in the interlibrary loan program with other states and other schools in the university. And you like to be kind of even in that, you want to, you want to borrow as many things as you're loaning out. And, and we've been running about 2.5 to one borrowing library. So we're, we're stretching the, the graces of the other universities at a certain level. So we're going to, we're, so that, I took that list immediately, let's go to the purchasing, as I said, we borrowed it now. We, we may need it again next year, so let's take a look at those things. So we've been aggressively buying, we're planning a, a project to remodel and add proper spaces. We're, we're standardizing purchases for supplies, this is always a bugaboo of mine. We had supplies in the library in different corners and different places. I, I've got 15 cases of manila envelopes. I don't know, I have 150 rolls of packing tape. It's just, you know, things that were required. We, so we're trying to get a handle on that because it's not a lot of money, but it's still money that you need to spend wisely and use efficiently because it doesn't, it doesn't go on forever. I call, I, my motto for a library is enhancing education through research. And that's, that's really the mission of any academic library. And to carry this out, we're doing, we're focusing on the collections, the facilities, the staff. One of the things we're looking at, we have a, a grant for open educational resources and our, our library program, the, the system that runs the, the collection to check things out and in is from Exlibris. They also have a module called Legonto and I'm meeting with one of their reps on Friday to talk about this some more. What Legonto does is a faculty member can lay out their course and they can type in the, okay, my, my students need to read these things. You put it in, Legonto then searches all of your available material, your collection, your eBooks, journals that you subscribe to, open your collection, your eBooks, journals that you subscribe to, open educational resources that are out there and we'll pull those all together within a minute and, and give you a list that you can add yourself. In essence, done properly, done strategically, you could eliminate the need for textbook because you would get all of the material that you want your students exposed to in one, you know, list of things to click and get. And Legonto does that, it's a very useful program. So I think it would be not only a benefit to the faculty, it'd be a benefit to the students and, and cost savings in terms of textbooks and things like that. So we're, we're working on those sorts of things as well. We, we're going to be hiring, we're going to be advertising for, we have some open positions, we're going to be advertising for new faculty, library position, somebody who will specialize in counseling and psychology. We have doctoral programs in those areas and we don't have a, a dedicated librarian to oversee the research needs of that. We need to fix that. And then we have another, we'll probably talk about filling in the fall or in between the fall and spring semesters. And, and my vision at this point is that that would be an open, open educational resource librarian, somebody who specializes in all of these materials that are available that, for free. And they're designed that way. It's kind of an academic debate right now. People creating material, not for profit necessarily for them and putting it, you know, but making it available and making it available for free. And frontline material. This is, these are not things that somebody's tried to get published and can't. These are frontline materials, they're designed just for this purpose. So we are, we're looking at that. And I want to, this is a, a new book, we just got this yesterday, it's from The Chronicle of Higher Education. It's The Library of the Future, How the Heart of the Campus is Transforming. One of the things I, Dr. Bradford knows about and has encouraged me this, is I'd like to put a cafe in the rest, in the library. I did this at University of North Carolina at Pembroke and it's now the second most popular eating place on campus. It's a, you know, people, you know, come and eat, they work. The, the old idea is, you know, not like, you know, drinks or food in the library is, is rather passe. I don't, never believed in it. And if you think your students aren't bringing things into the library to eat, then you're not paying attention. So we might as well embrace that and use it to our advantage, which is to draw on students, to make it, to make the library that center of activity on the campus. And, and where, where people can go and see each other and, and once they come in and are using the library or sitting in there, even if they went to get something to eat, they see the resources, they see the materials and they begin to work together, students collaborating in different areas because you have something like that appealing within the library itself.
I'm trying to catch a kind of a high, what is it, a thousand foot level rather than the detailed transactions you're doing and I'm not getting it. You have this, obviously I'm working very hard on this activities. I don't know if this is, if you plan to finish such evaluating and reducing the physical holdings by a certain timeframe, or if you have a goal of going like as much electronic subscription as possible by a certain timeframe, or what's, what are the limiting factors, funding, timeframes?
Sure. Right now, I would say, I will say, we will, we should have the weeding of the collection done by June, by the end of June, middle of July. The purchasing is, will, is being done now. It'll, it'll take a break for a while, I've got to close the year-end books and things like that and we'll start again in July. The, the remodeling, the office building, that's, is, is sort of dependent on me reducing the collection and being able to move the things out of an area so they can build. And, and that's my goal and that is, is June as well. Have it, it's ready, I mean, facilities may not be ready, but I'll be ready. And then we've moved, one of the rooms in the library that I don't control is the, the media, the production people. And they're starting a project right now, they're in there cleaning it out right now. They're going to build a podcast center and some other things. And so that affected some office area. I had, I had to clean, I had to move three people to another part of the building because we can't, the walls are going to come down. So we couldn't have them working there. So it's, you know, it's, it's an ongoing project, but I think it's, I think it's easily done this year and then just setting a. You talk about a, a library master plan and, and I'm sure that one was done for a, a, a building that I understand is planned. But it's probably not a bad time to take a look at that again. Things have changed. Even in the last year, things have changed. And COVID has, has, has opened up some observation. We were forced to look at, look at things that we may not have wanted to look at before in terms of electronic access, things like that. The, the, the print, the print book is not going away anytime soon, but it is, it is changing. They have been, technology has been advancing in that area. One of the big things about, you know, eBooks and, and reading on your computer screen is all the studies say you, you read and comprehend about 40% less on a screen than you do on printed paper. Just the way the mechanics of your eyes and everything else works and you can't do it as long. So, but they, they're beginning to overcome some of those things in terms of the technology. And as, as that begins to even out, probably even more. So we need to, to be ready for that and to, to go with that as well. I wanted to read.
Quick, we keep going on the topic for a little bit because, because I think we were fully expecting you to say about, you know, everything's going to be electronic, electronic scan, whatever. What, what is the current model of a top-notch university library right now? Is it geared towards current research or is there a mindset, there's an archive where you can go back and get old technology if you wanted to? Because a lot of times their local libraries can't do that, I would suspect, on your, not your field. I suspect people go to universities to be a source of old information, if you will. So how do you reconcile that? And if, are we trying to keep the physical collection? Are we trying to go electronic where we can? Or I just heard your comments about, you know, the effectiveness of it. But I'm thinking, if, if we're talking about appealing to researchers looking for specific information, they don't want to read the whole textbook on advanced physics or something, they just want to know about one specific area, which would seem that went more towards electronic than whatever. So how do you reconcile this? Paper versus electronic and.
It is, it's, it's hard to balance sometimes. I, we do have our archives where we collect and, and keep things of historical value and use to the university and also some faculty materials. And, but it's, it's a, it's, it's an interesting, and, and doing it all the years I have, you know, I've seen computers come in and, and advance. And I think you have to be careful sometimes about new technology and, and jumping into it and buying a bunch of stuff that is obsolete in two or three years or been superseded by better technology. So I, I tend to, I, I like to have some samples of the, the newest technology, but I also want to take a look at it and see, is there a future for this? I mean, at one point, you know, people, you know, microfiche and, and, you know, microfilm, that was going to solve all this stuff in terms of space and storage, you know, we're, we're getting rid of most of that now. It's a, there was a company that put out old microcards, you get a box and it was a little tiny photograph about EA Big and you needed a magnifying glass to read the article, said it well. That went away pretty quickly too, because it was just, no one's going to be able to do that. But I think, I think then it's also part of the library's job to work closely with the, with the IT people who are, you know, the experts and, and Chuck's office to make sure that we're moving forward at, at a good pace and keeping up with everybody, but at the same time, not, you know, investing too heavily in something that, that might be passe in a couple of years. We're, I'm going to acquire some book scanners, a company that basically you lay a book open and you can scan it to your computer for you to use, just like you'd make a copy with a Xerox machine for, of a book. And you can. And you can, and I sat down and did it. I copied a 250-page book and it took me about 15 minutes. So it's, the, the software flattens it out and makes it more readable. And those are handy things for students to have, access to. So it's, I understand the question. It's a little tricky sometimes, getting it, you know, how, you know, doing too much as opposed to not doing enough.
Well, I wasn't sure if that was standard practice for university libraries or not. Like I said before, like I said, sometimes if people are looking for old information. Say you want to look up, I don't know, vacuum tube technology for early generations. We're not going to have that because we're all electronic stuff. But do we not, does not a well-functioning or model, whatever that looks like, library have that availability also for old information?
Yeah, you do. I mean, there are certain things, for instance, periodicals, the bound periodicals, we have shelves. Most of those, they're electronically available in databases that we've purchased. And, and so there's no reason to keep the physical copy. And so they, they're, they're slowly going away. And other things may be coming in the future and we'll take a look more at it. It's, but the physical book collection, it's not going away anytime soon. I, I think it's still a vital and important part of the, the library operations and getting the, and to a degree, sometimes that's discipline-specific too. Nursing and business department, they need a certain type of material and some of those are online only. And so we acquire those for those things. So it becomes important to make sure that, that the library's not living in its own little bubble and our own little traditions and history that we're, we're out or interacting with the rest of the departments, the faculty and the colleges to make sure we're, we're doing what they need. Because we only exist to support the educational process. We don't, the library doesn't exist to support itself. Although at some schools, that does tend to happen. And so we need to be proactive and engaging and not just building our own world.
And your comments about the physical nature of it are well-taken. Because I remember years ago when I was a student here and that was just a few years ago, it was the same thing. It was, you didn't know what corner of the library. Is that what anything was? They always had ask librarian for anything because there's, there's little rhyme or reason except that one little area.
Right.
You're most familiar with. So I think your time spent on that is well-spent on that.
It's a, yeah. And it's because of the nature of the physical plant itself that that, the library's kind of, is in two different buildings, I heard. And it's a little bit difficult. So we're going to work on that in terms of layout and signage. And, and I think moving the bulk of the collection to the other side of the building will be very helpful. And, and splitting out the colleges with their own special collections and niches will, will make things flow better for everybody. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I think you've answered.
What was in your last flyer? Anything closing comments about the flyer that you were?
Oh, well, yeah, this, it's, it's nice to, you know, this just came out and I've read it, read through it last night. And he was giving the conclusion. And he says, "Some of the trends in the library and librarianship will be with us for years to come, given their importance to the academic community. First, the library building will remain a campus hub. Many campuses are like small cities and the library as a multipurpose area that organically attracts the community has long been locus of campus activity. College leaders should consider how the library can support a range of activities related to student success and community building. Given the complexity of global challenges, higher education may need to encourage more interdisciplinary scholarship and the library is the prime site for those sorts of activities." And, and that's, I think that's well said and that's what we're trying to do. It was nice to read this and see a lot of the things that we're trying to do are, were mentioned in this book.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thanks, sir. I will make one comment that might be appropriate to the library. Remember that, I think Blockbuster, when we had those DVDs, et cetera, they had the opportunity to buy Netflix at pennies. They didn't jump with the technology. And we know what happened.
For instance, we, we, I have subscribed to Films On Demand. So it's a database.
Exactly, yes.
Which makes all of the VHS tapes and things that we have in the collection superfluous.
Yes.
Bring us some space to that.
Perfect. Okay, thank you. Well, we have, I think that have covered the information items. We do have two action items today. The first deals with consideration and possible recommendation to the full board to approve tenure for six faculty, faculty members. May I have the motion, please?
So moved.
Second, having, when you two?
You'll want to have them presented and then you can vote on it.
Okay. Well, I didn't have to have discussions. Have you, have the forum or whatever it is, the roll call. Okay, then I'd like to have the presentation being made by, let's see, who's making the recommendation?
Provost Schneller, I believe.
Okay.
Are you doing the provost?
Are you waiting for me?
Yes.
Yes, we are.
Okay, I could, I could quite hear you.
Okay, sorry.
So based on the review of the tenure and promotion committees at the departmental and university levels, my review and the review of the president, I'm pleased to recommend the candidates for tenure and promotion in the class of 2022 to you for approval.
Okay, well, we have here that those consist of six faculty members, Vicki Coffey, Ting Ting He, Alice King, Timothy Pedago, Natalie Rector, and Amy Viacula.
Yes.
Who is sitting here.
I think we now proceed to the vote or the, the motion has been made. Would you please call the vote?
Trustee Caderas?
Aye.
Trustee DeBose?
Aye. So the motion carries. The, this committee therefore approves and will forward to the full board for consideration at their June 10th board meeting.
Just for background for Dr. Schneller, I mean, you've, you've probably been told this, but we've asked, we've been presented repeatedly about the whole process for going for, for regards of consideration for tenure. So at this point, I think we're pretty comfortable with the process behind it, which is why just a simple introduction, I think, sufficed rather than going exhaustive detail.
Yes, I, I also would like to comment that even though, like right now, this is sailing, this is not an automatic, this is not a way, a kind of something that we don't give a lot of weight to. This is very important. It's almost, there's some solemnity to it, except that there is no issue on this, on this package being proposed. So I'm, I'm delighted to forward it, that this committee has agreed to forward this. And congratulations to the individuals.
And on behalf of the faculty who are represented in the tenure and promotion process, we certainly thank you for your support of their candidacy.
We have a second motion as a consideration of possible recommendation to the full board to approve the submittal of the academic year 2021, 22 program review to IBHE. May I have the motion?
This is a standard annual report required by IBHE. And Dr. Sexton is available to answer any questions. So I would request approval of the IBHE program review for 2022.
Two fuses on the protocol here. Do we hear a presentation? Do we hear a discussion? Or is it?
That's what I'm, kind of, we have the motion to, to discuss the presentation. Yes. So please go ahead.
So just as a point of order, if I may, you would want to go ahead and make the motion and have it seconded. And then if you want Dr. Sexton to present or answer any questions.
So, yeah, I need your motion.
I'd like to make a motion to prove is presented.
Okay, please proceed.
Thank you very much for your time. I'll just kind of briefly summarize. I do want to call out in particular, we have the Chair of the Faculty Senate Academic Program Review Committee, Dr. Amy Viacula, in our presence. And I want to publicly thank her and her committee because this is probably one of the most rigorous jobs and truly a demonstration of the faculty owning the curriculum. And so each year, they get a list of, of our different academic programs, whether it's bachelor's, master's, doctoral or certificates that are identified to be reviewed. And when we talk about cyclical review, basically that means once a program is approved to run after three full years of enrollment, that's the first time they undergo cyclical review. And then once they get that initial review, then they get placed into the regular pathway. So every four to five years, they're also reviewed. And this year was particularly challenging because they had programs undergoing priority review, programs undergoing new, like after initial three years. And then they had several in the cyclical review. This, this process is very time-consuming. At the same time, APRC also reviews requests for new programs and the same as the University Curriculum Committee. So I do want to recognize their work and thank you, Amy, for your leadership. So the process is, is owned by the Senate. They identify the factors that they'd like to see and they work closely with the provost office because we also have elements of each program that we would like to review because we have to report this to the Illinois Board of Higher Ed who takes those summaries that you see there. And they put that in an appendix when they create a document that they provide to all of the state legislators. And in that document, they summarize which programs met the IBHE criteria. For example, a bachelor degree program has to have at least 40 students enrolled and graduate at least nine students in that program each year. If they are under 40 and under nine, then they get flagged for a priority review. So it has to meet both conditions. So we've had several low-enrolled programs that over the years have been flagged. And what the APRC does, and then they meet with me, Amy, we'll go through the results of that review. And we'll talk about, you know, what would be our recommendations. That, that's where they serve as, you know, what's the value of this program? Yes, maybe it looks like it has low enrollment, but the faculty also provide a ton of service credit hours. In other words, the courses that are included in that degree program are also courses that many students take as part of their general education requirements. So APRC takes all of that into account when they review the programs. And IBHE is actually very generous. They don't say, okay, if they don't meet this enrollment and this graduation criterion, then you must close them. They allow each institution to determine what it is we're going to do. So you may recall back in 2016 when we had no budget. We looked at a lot of programs and some that were low-enrolled were identified to be phased out. And we did indeed eventually close some of those. But many others were able to survive that budget crunch and low enrollment by redesigning. So I think a good example is like our Masters of Art has now become a Masters of Fine Art. Well, that's a terminal degree. So that's much more attractive to a student than just a Masters in Art. So in the years that they've been in existence, and that's one that we just reviewed with after three full years of enrollment in the new MFA. And so it, it was growing. It was meeting some of its original targets. And of course, then COVID hit. So that's a program that represents a challenge because, you know, how do you do an MFA under COVID conditions and remote? Now, I have to say that kudos to our art faculty. They figured out a way to get students in here and give students studio time where they were in there individually and cleaning the sites after they were finished. So, you know, we had some of those setbacks for some of the programs that really required more hands-on to, to, for their program delivery. But what you see here is a result of that really rigorous review, consultation with the Office of the Provost and then our recommendations for each of those programs regarding, you know, what, what should they do? When should they be reviewed again? What kinds of decisions should we make as an institution? And, and, and so this is, this is the result of this. This is the result of that work. You also see in there some of the new programs or new minors or new certificate programs that have been developed. Again, APRC and our University Curriculum Committee, two big committees from Faculty Senate, they're the ones that review the coursework. They review the proposals for the certificates and make those recommendations. There's a lot of chair and dean work that goes into, for instance, some of the new certificates. Because what they're doing there is looking at other ways to make the advanced degree more attractive. So in the College of Business, they proposed two new certificates with the idea being that a student would come, earn this post-bachelor certificate. And that earns them credit hours toward the master degree. So it's a way of kind of getting them into that next career pathway. So our faculty, our, and, and the deans and the chairs are being really strategic in terms of looking at, you know, where can we increase enrollment? How can we work cooperatively? For instance, looking at our strategic enrollment management plan. You know, what kinds of programs will attract students in our region? Where are the career opportunities? As you saw from Amy Barcia's presentation on extended learning, you know, how can we work collaboratively with them to build on those badges, to make those credit-bearing, to, you know, get the students into the program? Interim Dean Jason Zingsheim is working with, with, for instance, one, if you were at graduation, you saw one of our highest number of graduates is our interdisciplinary leader, excuse me, our interdisciplinary studies bachelor degree. That degree is one where students do bring in a lot of prior learning credit and kind of craft their own degree. And what Jason's kind of leading us in a conversation on is how can we expand credit for prior learning into all of our disciplines? So, so this report kind of is reflective of the work of all of the faculty and the chairs and the deans working together and where are we at now? How are we making sure we, we not only bring students in, but we graduate them? Programs that are kind of being asked to kind of rethink what they do are really looking at those things and just really working collaboratively to make sure that the students we do bring in, we do graduate. So that's kind of a summary of this process. Questions?
Delighted to, to hear the, the overview before I, before more discussion. An impression that it seems that during COVID times, there some institutions kind of like pulled back from doing this homework. And I'm glad that, to see that GSU kept very active on this. And this is, in my opinion, a very good report. Unfortunately, I haven't seen from other universities, so I don't really have a basis to compare. But looking at time, at past reports, you guys did a lot of work on this one. And they were, kind of, you tackled, I don't know, it's kind of like clearing house, getting rid of all things and it's, it's always difficult. You did that. So I'm, I'm pleased that it didn't fall in a crack and you carried on.
Well, thank you very much. And again, that's, that's kudos to our Faculty Senate committees who do a lot of work behind the scenes to make sure that when faculty say we own the curriculum, they truly do own that curriculum. In the provost office, we work very collaboratively with them to make sure that if we say this is the degree we're offering, truly that's what we're offering. Also, as an institution, we are committed, if a program can pursue a national recognition, a national accreditation, the university does support that. And for those programs where there is no accrediting body, you'll see that those programs, when they do undergo cyclical review, we do hire external evaluators that come in. They meet with the program coordinator. They meet with the chairs and the deans. They do a very thorough review as if they were an do a very thorough review, as if they were a national accreditor, and they meet with the faculty to talk about that, and then the faculty do reflect on that when they write their cyclical review. And another thing, I have to say, when we had our last HLC, one of the questions was about annual review. How are we collecting data to demonstrate that the students are meeting program learning outcomes? And you'll see that these reports, APRC is asking the programs, what about your yearly review? How are you collecting data? What are your outcomes? How do you know your students are meeting those outcomes? And we've really made some good progress on that for those programs that do not have a national accreditation. They are using the products we're supporting. We have watermark products via Anaku for assessments. They are using those, they're building their assessments. The GenEd Council is leading assessment of GenEds and working with the programs in their junior seminars and senior capstones. So we're really, as an institution, advancing this whole ownership of yearly assessment, evaluation of student learning, as well as program assessment. How do we use that to improve our programs?
Do you have any questions?
I do. I got one. Just so I'm just scanning through the data, and by this time, we've seen this data layout several times, so we're comfortable with reviewing it anyway. One jumps out to me, early on in this, beginning of this meeting, we had heard a comment that the DNP program was fully accredited and approved and overcame those delays they had out there. And this, that, I'm just having to be scanning through, it looks like that we have a total of three-year average of two graduates from the program. Is this... What's your sense on that? Is that a growing program? Is it going to be developing?
Okay, so it's a little hard to hear you. Are you asking about the doctor of nursing practice?
I am.
Okay, so let me go to...
On page 10.
Okay.
First line on page 10.
You're looking at the tables, correct?
I'm looking at tables, yeah.
So the DNP, so our three-year average enrollment, our 14 students, and so, yeah, so you can see, we've graduated three years, two students. So that's one that's fairly new, but via IBHE standards for a doctoral program, as long as you're graduating two students average, and, you know, if you have less than 10 majors, which we, you know, we're at that number, and you're graduating two, we're well within, you know, what IBHE has. Now, Kathy Balthazar is here as the dean, and she may be able to speak to the plans for growth and enrollment of the DNP, maybe a statement or two.
Certainly. So we have a marketing campaign that we're engaging in, and it's actually for all of the nursing programs, so we're launching some... It's a media campaign that involves social media and geofencing around the areas where we have a good market for the DNP. DNP's are candidates, are all full-time, working there substantially, and so we try to market, not just that it's accredited now, but also that it's a good option for people who are working there. So we try to emphasize these marketing campaigns, the feasibility of getting that degree while you're still working as a nurse. So.
What does your gut tell you about that, about Balthazar? Is that like an untapped field for you? Think there's opportunity there?
There's a lot of competition for nursing students at all levels. There is a big proliferation at all levels. There is a big proliferation of other programs. So, and so even though there's a huge need in the employment market for nurses with all different levels of degree preparation, and also in higher education, we really need those doctorally-prepared nurses to teach in our nursing programs. So I think the untapped angles, really, are what we're trying to emphasize. So one of the things is the unique properties of GSU's programs and the appeals of people who are in our geographic service region, who also might be employed at other state universities. So we geofence it. In other words, we push those pop-up kinds of advertisements or notifications within particular regions, like around YCs or around other places in the medical district, because those employees also have tuition benefits at other state institutions. So we're trying to kind of emphasize that to draw on that market and appeal more to students in a face of competition with other programs. And then, let's see, what was the other thing? I think we're also trying to develop a name for those by, for our program, a reputation for research and studies supporting particular areas that are of high interest in the health equity market. So we're thinking about things like maternal and child health, people who write about and who study quality of care in the healthcare industry. A lot of the DNP students will end up doing projects that are quality improvement projects or needs assessments that are very valuable for them in their administrative roles, but then also they can be candidates for being instructors and researchers at other universities. So this idea of having, there's a market that we don't care about very much, which for people who get these doctoral degrees, not just in nursing, but in other health professions, which is to serve this burgeoning growth of health professions programs across the state and region. So they need faculty members to teach in all of those programs. And that represents another step in the career ladder, and for many of those people who have been practicing nurses or nurse administrators for some time, it's appealing to them to start moving into, you know, a less direct care kind of mode, maybe into higher education. So we're trying to hit the advantages of that and really make that a clear, you know, clear in our marketing, which we target specific people that we think will benefit most from attending GSU, and trying to also give our programs the flavor of what GSU stands for, which is, you know, equity access and quality education.
Thank you.
And Will has, you wanted to mention.
Along with those things, we have identified some universities or institutions that have nurses working there and also with the healthcare hospital situation. Those nurses are not getting into the program at their own employer. So they might be looking for advanced degrees, but it's so competitive of where they are. We've been geofencing and targeting those individuals as well. And also, we've been doing the good old-fashioned, go have conversations. So between Dr. Green, Provost Schneller, and my team, we've identified at least three hospitals in which there has been personal conversations with their leadership to help establish cohorts. So it's not just all the things that have been mentioned earlier this morning, but it's also that go fashion, go sit down and talk with the leadership to show that Governor of State is a solution for them. Next month, we will have an alumni reception with a hospital who has sent multiple employees to Governor of State and paid their way. So again, that's another platform for us to promote these things, and one of our alums is on a billboard. You'll see who is part of Advocate System, and which Advocate approved for us to be able to show that individual on a billboard near some of their facilities as another pathway.
Very good. Yeah, I'm not trying to pick on a nursing program, it just jumped out to me. There's some other, you know, other degree programs, we only have a couple or three graduates also, I just happened to jump on that one for no other reason than that, so thank you.
And no further questions. With that, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Without further discussion, then, the motion is... Would you please call the roll call on the motion?
Trustee Kaderis?
Aye.
Trustee DeBose?
Aye. Well, the motion carries then, and the committee will forward to the full board the consideration for the June 10th board meeting as well. Do we need an executive session? Is there any issues or anything, any old business? Dr. Green, any topics that you'd like to bring?
Thank you.
Then I'll entertain the motion to adjourn today's meeting.
Please. So moved.
Second, the motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned. I thank you very much for participating.
And just a reminder, I mean, this is where we ask questions, so this seems a little tedious at times, but if we don't take advantage of the people having the expertise through mail, then we're not doing university rights service. So thank you for your openness.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Provost.[1780.41]